Well, it is 6:31. We will call this meeting to order. And we'll start off with a roll call of the members. Matt Yeton, myself present, Susan Wood.
Present.
John Christ.
Present.
Phil Lemarou.
Present.
Michael Bouchard.
Present.
Molly McCann.
Present.
Neil McGyver.
Present.
Alternates Zach Tyrell is not joining us tonight, and Bradford Poppa.
Yep.
Excellent. And do we have a... can we see one?
So, one, two, three.
No.
Six.
Seven.
No, we were full seven.
Perfect. Bradford, thank you for your attendance. You'll be remaining an alternate tonight.
Thank you.
We'll move on to review the minutes from August 7th meeting.
Is that a sign of distress?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of August 7th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. Thank you very much. Joseph, communications received by the board.
Do you have one communication? It relates to the tenure plan project that I have previously updated the board on. It may... it's up to the board. I know we have a couple of applications. I can also save that for other business, since it's more of an update on an ongoing project, or I can share it now.
I feel fine saving that for other business, so we can discuss with the applicants what they have brought before us tonight. Thank you very much. We'll start off with the first application. A boundary line adjustment for 295 Highland Street and 5 Adrian's Way. This boundary line adjustment application from KAB Properties is to relocate a common boundary lines between three parcels on Highland Street and Adrian's Way. Parcel number 212-010 is proposed to decrease in size to .9 acres. And parcels 212-011 and 212-012 will be combined and reconfigured into one lot of approximately 4.39 acres. Is the applicant present and would like to speak to this before we get started?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jerry Grondo with Allen and Major Associates, representing KAB Properties. So, we're proposing a lot merger between... it's map 212 lots... we're going to merge lots 11 and 12. Lot 10 is going to remain. And then the proposed lot line adjustments between the interior lot line of lots 10 and 11. We're proposing this to make it a developable lot. We're going to propose a common easement down the existing driveway for 295 Highland. And all the setbacks, zoning dimensional criteria are met with the existing building remaining in its current use as a Domino's. There's going to be the common easement for access. Setbacks are all met. The only fault is currently existing nonconforming is the parking setback from Highland Street, which is existing for the current lot 10, which is the Domino's. That's what we're proposing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's take a look at the application and look through the requested waivers, and we'll make a determination via vote on whether to accept the application. Does anybody have any concerns before we move forward with accepting the application?
Is Adrian's Way a private road?
Joseph, is that a private road?
It is. Yep. Adrian's Way is a private road. There is a right-of-way along the side of the property, and it accesses... there's a senior housing development in the back. But that's the only... to my knowledge, the property is compacted here, and that housing developments are the only properties accessed on Adrian's Way.
Oh, sorry. Adrian's Way is actually... interesting. Just... it's a very small parcel.
Mm-hmm.
It's not just a right-of-way. It's a stand... is it a standalone parcel?
I believe it is.
Or is it... it's not just a right-of-way? The tax map shows it as its own parcel, map lot 13. Maybe it's...
The pins appear to be in... Yeah. The pins do seem to be along that line.
Okay.
What lot were you referring to?
Pardon?
What lot were you referring to that...
Adrian's Way is its own parcel. I'm on the tax map, and when I click down, it popped up as its own... So, I mean, basically, this is a lot down to here, its own parcel. It's not... you know, it does not affect the subdivision, but there is kind of a road cut into this lot from Adrian's Way.
Right, right.
Which is shown to be approximately 50 feet.
Yeah.
That is a road cut, not a permanent driveway or something?
Yeah, we... there wouldn't be a driveway proposed. The existing topography, I mean, it's a pretty steep slope coming out of that. So, that's why we're trying to propose the common easement down the main drive aisle. We maintain that common access there, as opposed to trying to traverse the steeped topography here.
Yeah. I think it's become more steep over the years. I think there was... it was not always that steep.
Yeah.
I think I observed that there had been fill placed in that area.
Okay.
To build out the flat area that was used for materials, but... It is... it is what it is.
I see no reason to hold up acceptance.
Is that a motion?
I move we accept the application.
One second.
There's no other further... no further discussion on the acceptance of the application? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, great. The application has been accepted, and now move on for approval.
Hearing.
And we will start with opening a public hearing. Any comments from the public tonight? Any further comments by the applicant at this time?
No.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm sure we might ask some questions.
Yeah, yeah. We're here to answer questions.
Thank you.
Do we have a waiver request somewhere that I'm just not seeing?
There is one on that narrative that was submitted.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah. It got lost. Thank you, Susan.
And the waiver should have been... I didn't mention this as part of the acceptance, but it would have been implicitly... I could have mentioned more rightly approved as part of the acceptance.
If we chose to deny the waiver, we would have gotten that before the acceptance.
Yeah.
Great. Well done.
Can I ask a question, Joseph? You mentioned the acreage not being included on the final plan, which I am assuming is page two of this pack thing, right?
So, yeah, the applicant...
Which has square footage for lot one and lot two.
Correct.
Is that not sufficient, or...
Yeah, so it's a... it does provide the acreage. It's an interpretation question. It does say provide the total acreage as well in the plat requirement. However, it... I think it's a pretty reasonable read of that to say providing the acreage of both, and you have to do the math is...
Oh, okay.
But it is...
There should be... so there should... there should have been the combined number as well, technically, but it's probably pretty good.
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Yeah.
But this does, you know, substantiate that, but having the acreage would be helpful as well.
I will point out that we have recently changed our, you know, lot sizes from acres to square feet, to get away from that. So, honestly, having square feet is actually more accurate.
Well, I think Joseph's point was that there should be a combined number as well.
Yeah.
Which is probably not all that crucial that we could waive.
You know, the... I think the thing that we should remember is, you know, are the plans going to be meaningful when they're recorded for future use? And that's probably what we should be considering.
And the last recommendation, Joseph, was the information that was missing from the final plan, the name and parcel number of the abutter across Adrian's Way. So, you wanted that listed as a condition of the approval. We should be sure to...
Yeah, and that's what Navy caught in the review, and yeah, it does call for the listing of all the abutters, and it looks like one may have been not shown on the plan, but on the list, so just a minor plan tweak.
We can show that as a condition, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Did we already...
Is it Adrian's Way? Lot 13.
Church of God. The Assembly of God. Did we already discuss the need for the driveway easement to happen through deed?
We have not.
No, but I think there was an implicit statement about that, but it should probably be a condition, so that just really can't go through unless that is in place.
Correct. Yep. That would be fine.
I'll let you end up with arguments in a few years.
Do we want to also just... do we decide that we also have a condition that the acreages be updated in conjunction with the square footage, or how does everyone feel about it?
We could show the property labels with acreages as well as square footage.
That's not a problem.
Just translate it. Yeah. Yeah, we can show both.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
If everyone's comfortable, we can move on to finding of facts.
Sure.
We close the public hearing?
I suppose we should do that. It is... I'm just getting back into things.
Before you close, Eric, I just wanted to interject something. When you wrote, I felt you made an easement, it was all in place before you wrote it. You can't do that. You cannot give an easement to yourself. That can only be created when it's all owned by one owner. You don't have the easements. It only can be created after the lots are sold and the new owner comes in. So, it's done during the conveyance process, and that should... in my opinion, should be a required.
Good point.
Thank you.
So, while the lots are owned by KAB, there's no need for an easement, but once the property is sold...
As long as it's detailed on the plan, it would be written in... when the attorney does it, it'll be written into the deed when it's done. As long as it's on a recorded plan, that's what counts.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Then they have done that, so...
The easement won't be in place for any sale of that new law.
And just to check in with staff, that kind of gels with your understanding?
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's... yeah, it doesn't... the easement... I guess the key point here is the easement does not automatically happen with the recording of a plan that shows an easement, but once that deed happens upon transfer. So, I think that's the important point to take here, is that you can record the plan without the easement... I mean, you can record the plan with the easement, but really, it's important to have it contained in the text as well.
I guess my question becomes if it's transferred without the easement being recorded in the deed and it's shown on a plan, does the future owner of that parcel have recourse?
It's tough to say. I don't have an answer for that, but I've seen circumstances where we've had previous...
But it's a civil matter at that point. It's not a planning matter. We've done our due diligence to ensure that it's on the plan.
And certainly, maybe, yeah, we can aware of that, but it definitely is something where I have certainly seen instances where you have easements on a plan that is recorded, and then the easement was never effectuated, even on subdivision plans that the planning board has approved, and those have been... as has been conveyed to me, those are not considered valid since they were never followed up on. So, that's just a... really just a point of awareness, and a point to be thinking about when looking at these things.
Are there any protections we can take to make sure the easement is valid at that point, or not really, right? Be recorded on the plan that are expectations that are upon transfer of that, that the easement would be recorded in? That's about as far as our oversight or concern would be? All right. Any other comments from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 6:47. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to findings of facts.
All the departments have reviewed them with no comments.
Thank you, Susan.
Access is from a town road, not a private road.
I would say the combination of lots 11 and 12 would limit... would then allow both parcels to have access on the town road, as opposed to relying on access from a private road to the... to lot 12, as it currently is, which is an improvement.
Town road sewers right there at the end of the road.
Well, all dimensional requirements are met, save for pre-existing strontishments along Highland.
Any other facts? Anyone would like to move, add?
I'm pretty comfortable with this.
Yep. And then we have the conditions.
Suggesting conditions?
Yes, the suggesting conditions. We have three of them, Joseph?
Acreage and square feet, right?
Acreage and square feet, square footage.
The abutter to the west needs to be labeled.
Yep, the abutter. Actually, I think that was all.
I think that was it, because the deed question was maybe the same thing.
Correct. Satisfied. All right. I feel good about that.
I'll add one finding of fact, that we've reviewed and approved all the requested waivers.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. How does everyone feel about this application? Is it some... everyone's comfortable moving forward to a vote?
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
I move to approve this application with the stated conditions.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your time.
That's good. It's nice. Okay, I won't chew on it.
All right, we'll move on to the next application we have tonight, which is a boundary line adjustment for 174 Mayhew Turnpike. It's a boundary line adjustment application from Alan Barnard for Max and Linda Lager to relocate a common boundary lines between parcel 216-023, 216-024, and a portion of parcel 216-024 that the select board has affirmed is actually a third lot, having been involuntary merged with the remainder of the parcel. This third lot would increase from .39 to 1.04 acres in size. Do you have any other comments on this?
Well, no other comments besides what's captured there. I mean, there's a little bit of unusual backstory to each other's checks, but at the end of the day, the select board did approve and agree to the fact that this was indeed three lots, as opposed to two, which is what the tax maps currently showed. So, what you're seeing here is not reflective of what's currently on the tax maps, but as of the select board's approval, it is effectively as though there are three lots here. And besides that, everything is essentially as it would otherwise be with the application of three lots, except that this third lot has not yet been assigned a parcel number nor reflected on the tax map, because that update only happens once per year. But other than that, no other comments on my end.
Perfect. Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add, just one thing, it's a boundary line adjustment and an agreement plan, because we're doing a boundary line agreement as well. I'll explain it after acceptance of the application, but just for the record, because boundary line agreements also have to come through the board.
Perfect. Thank you. Before we review the application for acceptance, do you have anything to say, or would you like us to move forward to that?
No, the lot that has been unmerged at the selectmen's meeting was undersized, and we're actually increasing it up to 1.025 acres, so we're bringing in the conformity for frontage and for area, and then straightening it out the boundary lines, which I'll explain after the acceptance of the application.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move forward to look at the application for completeness, any waivers, and at that point, move forward whether we will be accepting it or not.
Are there requested waivers?
I don't think there are.
I don't see any, no. Seems like a pretty full application.
People can prove that before.
Yeah, I was doing that, too, and then I looked at the checklist.
Joseph, to confirm, we had no waivers on this application.
Yeah, so there are none requested. There are a few items that are worth noting. Plat requirement six, property lines of the... surveyed property lines of the entire parcel. Plat requirement eight, location of well in 4,000 square foot area. Plat requirement 13, soil type units, and 15 topographical contours, which do not appear to be provided herein, though those are not uncommon waivers for a boundary line adjustment of this nature. It's with... especially with a large piece of land being one of the two impacted lots. It's... those are fairly common waivers for a boundary line adjustment like this.
Thank you.
Can you repeat those three?
The requirements.
Yeah.
Flat requirement six, property lines of the entire parcel. Eight, location of well in 4,000 square foot area. 13, soil type units, and 15 topographical contours.
So, they're checked off on this application, but they're not on the submitted plan?
Not, based on my review of the submitted plan.
I'm seeing that as well, so just want to confirm.
Typically, we ask for a waiver in writing, but I feel comfortable moving forward.
Okay.
Personally.
I do as well, yeah.
I do, too.
I think especially with the size of the larger lot that's acceptable in this application.
The other thing that's tricky, you can pass it around to... this is a survey of the 36 acre lot, just in case you wanted to see it.
Thank you.
It's sketched on in the overall's plan in the upper left for the abutter parcels anyhow, to give you an idea. And we did do the frontage on the road to show that we weren't decreasing the frontage to sub standing.
That was good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or concerns before we move to look at the acceptance of this application?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Well, there we are.
Unless there's any concerns before we do.
No.
No.
Okay. I move we accept this application as complete.
Okay.
Yeah.
Proceed.
Understanding there were a couple of things not included that we all agreed were acceptable, even without the written notice.
You still second?
I second that.
Okay. Sorry.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? All right, we have accepted the application. Before moving on to look at the accepted... the approval of it, we'll open a public hearing at 6:59. Any comments from the public?
Well, sure, I'll do a brief presentation of what we're actually trying to do, and I appreciate you doing the waivers without us doing writing. Like I talked to my clients here tonight, Max Lager and myself, I said I was going to use the... if I had to to get a waiver, I said I was going to use that combined age of 150 years old. We can't write well as we now used to. So, thank you for that, right, Max? All right. I get to use it, you know? I work with Neil, too, so I know... he knows how I feel, too, right, Neil? All right. So, I've added a note here... I've added some notes and some clarifications to clean up the plan since I've been to the selectmen. And number five, the Plummets Select Board on August 11th, 2025, approved the lot as depicted on the plan reviewed by 150, deed book 1264, page 53, to be unmerged, restored, and now being adjusted, including some of the property lines being agreed upon to clear up deed, description conflicts with the Lager's property. So, that's what we're doing now. The assessor was absolutely correct at a meeting stating that they could only unmerge it and reestablish it by the deed description, which was 150 by 100, which on this plan, if you look just above Max Lager, which I assigned a tax map number to this, because it says we had to have one, so I'll... I assigned lot 216-24-1, because that's a lot of times the way they do it, so I... it's funny, in Camden, we have to assign the numbers, so I automatically gave it a number, so you had something to work with. If... that'll just... I just did this to get Joseph going. So... but anyhow, I think it's helpful to have. The town can change it if they want. So, you see some dash lines, 100 by 150, with a D beside it for deed. That's how it would actually lay in there. And then when you do the abutting deeds and the abutting surveys, the line comes out along that stone wall to the boulder to the iron pipe found. And I have two other lines on there showing how it was actually created and done on the ground, which actually takes precedent over the deeds. But the good thing here is it's all the Lager's that own it, so they can adjust the lines and agree to them. So we're doing an agreement on that. So we're going along that stone wall, says agreement line, agreement line. You'll see from pipe to the iron rod we set in the boulder, down to the new iron rod in the southwest corner of the lot being adjusted. And then back out to the road is the adjustment line. And then of course, the frontage back up along there. So that brings the lot up to 1.025 acres. It takes in that existing driveway and his two storage buildings that are there. I believe those were your brother's buildings, your storage, a lot of it. And his brother David, he had passed away, so it's just in Max's name now. They had received the, they received the 100 by 150 lot. Max, just his own self, owned it in 1975 with his brother. So now he's the sole owner of that. And he and his sister own the house to the north, tax map 216, lot 24, and the 36 acre lot, 216, lot 23. So that's how we can do all this, correct all the lines with agreements and with the adjustment. I put total frontage on there, so you're aware it's 244.08 for the lot we're doing. As you can see, we have well over, what, 370 feet roughly left on the frontage for that. So we have plenty of area for all of that. I had copies of the other deeds if you have any questions. But that's what we're up to. Be glad to entertain, any questions you may have?
Hang tight, we might have some.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Joseph, I was noticing in the report, it said assessing comments pending. And we just heard a little bit of commentary from the applicant about the assessing. Can you say more about that?
Yeah, unfortunately, we didn't receive anything before this meeting. I did, I suspect perhaps that has to do with the Select Board already having made a decision on this. It is, I think that the major overarching, you know, I had extensive conversations with the assessor, Emily, before this went to the Select Board. And, you know, she did considerable research into the property and recommended the Select Board restore the lot. She does, of course, note that, you know, absent this, it will be restored to basically what it should have been, absent this. So it would not be, as you see here, except for the approval of this. Of course, deeds do need to be updated as well to effectuate that. And also noting that, and I do, I did incorporate part of this into the recommendations at the end there with regards to the parcel number, just noting that if we're going to have a parcel number there, just with the, perhaps a plan note, I think one of the conditions says you could either have a plan note that said this parcel number is a placeholder. The actual parcel number will be determined by the assessing department in accordance with the 81125 approval of the restoration. Or the actual description of the parcel could say parcel number to be assigned, or something to that effect. So it really, those were kind of the points that the assessor brought up. And I think some are reflected in here and some perhaps were more addressed by the Select Board, I suspect.
So let's just parse through that then. So it doesn't sound like we're waiting for anything important from the assessor at this point. And most of what we're gonna hear has already been said.
Correct, and a lot of it was informational.
Yep.
And just to express different aspects of this that would probably, that would happen sort of regardless. They don't necessarily need to be a condition, like the fact that the assessor will assign a lot number once the tax maps are updated and that the deed would need to be updated accordingly.
And with regard to that, can we accept like a Mylar as is with this lot number in here? Or does that have to hold up, or?
I, so I would, so the, I had in the staff report, there's a recommendation for a condition that there be a plat note added saying that either this parcel number is a placeholder, actual parcel number to be assigned, or to replace that parcel number with a statement to that effect. So I.
So it would be okay to have like a Mylar with that number on it if it had that note? And it wouldn't be an issue?
That would be my understanding of it. Or it could be changed and replaced with just a statement that says parcel number to be assigned and could reference the Select Board's restoration. I don't necessarily think there would be a problem either way, but it could, a couple of ways you could handle it.
What do you, actually, let me move first to close the public hearing at 7:06. What do you think, looking forward, would you, like when looking at Mylars and maps, what would you prefer to see?
That's a good question.
A note or a placeholder?
I think just saying that there's, just making a note that the parcel number is to be assigned could prevent confusion in the future, in the, perhaps in the change of title or other. You know, if you pull up the plan, that's what the deed descriptions would reference the plan, things like that. So there's a potential if the assessor, I mean, if the assessor assigns this number, there's no problem. If the assessor assigns a different number to the parcel, then all of a sudden, you could have some confusion. So, I mean, either way, you would be addressing it, but it might be clearer if it just says parcel number to be assigned as per the Select Board's restoration. And perhaps, you know, the board could see what the board is more comfortable with. But sometimes it's easier to, sometimes if there's that confusion or if there's an inconsistency, it can create confusion in the future.
Can I go back a little bit and summarize my understanding to make sure it's correct? So we had one lot that was taken to the Select Board, described as being, actually, it was two lots because of historical reasons. The Select Board approved that, so now there's actually, we're actually talking about three lots. And then additionally, the applicant wants to change that lot that is now restored to a different shape, that southern lot. Yes, perfect, thank you.
This was the one?
Yeah.
That is a separate lot?
Yeah.
It exists and should have had a number, and the town hasn't had it since 1975. I think assigning that number, like he says, can be used for placeholder. I think it should be on there because it's more confusion without one. If they change the tax map number, because no conveyances are made by tax map numbers. They do that and it's not legal, they can't be used. So it doesn't matter as far as being reported for that number. In my opinion, so this lot existed and it was unmerged. The problem is, if you went forward to do the tax map first, then this would have to be put on the tax map and show all the overlaps. The deed overlaps, you can see, there's a triangle here, there's two triangles and everything else. That would have to go on the tax map, that would even be more confusing. So we're lucky that we can bring it in and do the adjustment in agreement all at once.
Yeah.
So at least now when it's put on the town tax map, it's less confusing, which is, should be bonus enough to leave that tax map number on there with the Mylar I have. Joseph listens to me all the time, you know. We go around in circles on important stuff, this is mine. But that's why the assessor said this had to be redone exactly by the deed, but creates overlaps. I know I'm redundant. I'm eliminating overlaps, correcting everything by doing this now. And, I mean, if you have any other questions, be glad to address it.
No, I'm just, I wanted to make sure I understood the overarching issue before I started chiming in on the tax map lot number.
The town has missed that since 1975, it's been separate. I don't know why, but it has.
I would like to applaud you for creating clear boundaries on a recorded plan so that future transfers are not muddied by the historical deed reference.
Correct, and you can thank the Lager's for that too.
Yes.
They were willing to be patient and do it all at once. So I think that's the, I think for all the overlaps, the changes, the nuances of little fine things, I think were in good shape by the way, what I presented. And Joseph emulated that a little bit, he went around and said it could work. I think he's leaning towards that now. Look at him. But it's up to the board, of course. You miss me, don't you, coming in?
Yeah, so I guess one of the most important things is making sure that the changes are reflected in the deeds.
That's correct, but we can't do that until this is recorded, of course. But yes, it's gonna be done, matter of fact, he's, he has an attorney, well, you have Attorney Brian Ray gonna do it. Attorney Brian Ray is gonna do it as soon as I record this, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or as soon as the town records it.
I'm happy to see that Linda has signed the application.
Yes. And Max will, and Max and I are witness to that, aren't we? Of course, that lot is just Max, the one we're adjusting.
Yes.
Of course, Linda is involved in the agreement and the adjustments.
Right.
Yes.
I was concerned that perhaps if this came in without Linda's signature, it could have been a taken from her ballot.
Correct, that's why it's on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I made sure that was on there, and I added a few things I shouldn't have had, but we did all right with that. So we have it clear there, and also on the notes, on my note number two, I have the purpose of the plan too. The purpose of this plan is to aid in obtaining approval from the town for the financial planning board for the boundary line adjustment and agreement lines as shown on this plan. So we have a clear intent.
Yep.
Is there finding of facts for anyone?
Is the management requirement something that?
Thank you.
I will say that the, with the approval of the Select Board authorizing the unmerging of these lots, there are three parent lots resulting in three outcome lots that are slightly differently configured than was started.
Excuse me, is an unmerger of just one lot?
One lot.
One lot was unmerged, that was it?
Yes.
Okay.
But the boundary lot, no, my, the finding of fact I was suggesting is that there were three parent lots.
Correct.
Three lots involved in this, in this boundary line adjust, on the plan.
Adjustment and agreement, yes.
And there are three lots resulting. So there's no, there's no creation or removal of lots according to this plan.
Right, there's no new lots and no new owners, correct. Thank you.
Let's look summarizing that for the minutes.
Lots are not created or destroyed.
The board has accepted all the informally requested waivers.
We have time for a question. Is there a well on the property that's not shown?
No, there, no, there wasn't. The 150 by 100 foot lot again.
Yes.
Is completely vacant, nothing was on it.
Right.
Because if you notice, I just wanna point this out.
I'm more worried about the proposed lot, 24-1.
The proposed lot does not have a well on it, no. No, they have power to it. And that was the other thing I just wanted to point out to the board for your own edification is where the lot with a house on it was two lots as well. Since they built the barn and deck over it, it was what we call merged by usage. And that, that's why it's one, to let you know that. Because that's one thing Joseph and I discussed, and the first thing I pointed out, this was a complete vacant lot that we were unmerging. Because if it had been used jointly with a well, septic, anything else, it would have been automatically merged. So that's why the two with a house are merged.
Yeah.
I know, it's a very confusing little plan.
To your point, Phil, are you concerned that the southern lot would not, since we didn't do it like testing and such, potentially be able to support development?
It's, well, so Mike, yeah, I'm not as concerned about that because it's an existing lot of record, it's being made less non-conforming.
Yes, okay.
So I don't feel that it's necessary to show a 4,000 square foot area.
Okay.
Because it's being, there's no requirement, if it's an existing lot of record and it's being made less non-conforming, I feel like.
And you shouldn't need to do that, yeah.
Right.
It's not being made less non-conforming, it's being made conforming.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I use that, I use that all the time when I have to. But when I'm making it conforming, I wanna take a pat in the back.
As you should, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Technically, making it conforming is less non-conforming. It's ultimately, it's the ultimate amount of less.
Standing words.
Semantics, semantics.
I have a question about Mayhew Turnpike.
Yes, Neil.
Was that built in 1835?
No, well, originally, Mayhew Turnpike was 1803.
1803.
Yeah, you wanna look, it's a nice historic marker at the end of the traffic circle on the Route 25 end by the last chair. The original stone is still there, chiseled 1803. Yes. And, but, an interesting thing about a turnpike, it was four rods wide from Plumbet to Franklin, except for when the turnpike, and it was owned by a private corporation. And that's, and the reason they call it turnpikes was they had a pike on the road, you had to turn to go through and pay the toll. So, but when the turnpike's discontinued as a corporation, that whole right of way is gone. So it had to be relaid out by the towns later. And in Bristol, they actually went back to fifty, three rods from four, which is 49 and a half feet. I just barely, in all my career, just discovered the original survey done back in, it was around 1850s or 60s, Neil, when they resurveyed that after it was, the corporation was discontinued. So that's why the, we're still holding the stone walls as a physical evidence. I mentioned a highway plan in there, but it was just for pavement and curbing and improvements to the road, so there's no NHDOT.
Three-rod road?
Bristol.
I think it's three there, or it could be four, but they, I'm holding, we're holding the stone walls still for the limit of the highway. It's an easement highway, so technically, the land goes to the center line anyhow. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry to confuse these other guys, but I know you love the history.
I think it's important.
That is a finding of fact for the history books?
Sure. Clarification, if it's an easement road and the lots go to the center line of the highway, do the lots go to the center line between the stone walls? Or do they go to the marked center line of the traveled way?
Stone walls.
Okay.
It's, the traveled way is very rarely ever in the center line. And you have to be very careful on the original layout because sometimes the layout is all out of one lot, so it's not always necessarily to the center. Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
So there's a, the more you learn, the more I've learned about roads, the less I know.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I'm in a court case right now.
For example, if there's 32 feet between the stone walls, you have 16 feet from the stone wall, your property extends 16 feet into this, into that roadway.
Yes, it would.
Regardless of where the road is.
And that's, that's an easement, subject to that easement, which is not recorded, which there isn't any written easement, it's an implied easement. And it's just like the survey plan earlier when I was mentioning, you can't give yourself a right of way. The things we do for the other boards is you put on the plan that lots two, three, and four serve by that easement, to be served by that easement. So if they even mention the plan in the deed, that entire plan becomes part of the conveyance regardless of the description. All right, so if that plan's mentioned, everything on that plan is part of that deed. And so that clears up those nebulous areas that you were discussing earlier. Anyhow, yeah, road stuff gets very complicated. I'm in a law suit right now in Dorchester over a road, and I'll tell you how that goes. American officiating game in DOJ, so, Department of Justice with AG's office, so I'm on the right side, hopefully. But anyhow, it's, it's, it's a complicated issue. There's a good book out there, which I'm sure Joseph has in his office, The Hard Road to Travel, covers a lot of issues. It's a very interesting one, and then go from there.
Wasn't that published by UNH?
It was actually through, I think, the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
Was it? Okay.
Yes. And there's three, it's been three volumes. The first volume was considered a little biased towards towns, and so they rewrote it. So, I've been around for all three versions, so.
I think there's also an interesting historical book about the turnpikes of New Hampshire.
Yeah, turnpike, it's interesting how the, you know, corporations got paid to build the roads and they got their money back out of it, yeah. Looks like fairies. Yeah, I'm not talking the kind your kids play with, you know. I'm talking the ones that shuttle you across the river.
Or to an island or.
Definitely.
Interstate highway.
Do we have any other finding of facts? We have three right now. I feel comfortable with those.
So do we need to discuss the conditions about the parcel? I know we were talking about the parcel number. I know we were talking about the parcel number placeholder until the assessor can.
Yeah, I think that probably is good.
I am more comfortable allowing the assessor to number the parcel, only because, you know, if it's, yeah, I just, I prefer to avoid the confusion about, the potential confusion about a plan being recorded with a number that gets superseded by the assessor and then someone referring to that down the road.
I agree.
I agree.
So that's the condition we can put on the approval?
I think we should put that condition on, a parcel number to be assigned.
Okay.
Because I think a placeholder does confuse things.
We can keep the current number as the placeholder. That's on the map right now.
Well, we can either add a note.
The number will be assigned.
That a number will be assigned and that the number present is a placeholder.
Joseph's recommendation.
Yeah, I think either would be viable. You could say that you could not have a number there and say parcel number to be assigned, or you could have the number there and say this number is a placeholder, parcel number to be assigned as a note somewhere else would be, as I view it, the two ways that you could address that.
Are you going to make a motion, Mike?
I move that we accept this application with, approve, excuse me, approve this application with the condition that the parcel number will be assigned by the assessor.
And a note to that effect.
And a note to that effect on the submitted plans.
Second.
Any other discussion before we move forward with the vote? All right, we have motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, no.
We all opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, crew of us.
What's the note you want on the plan? You want that tax number to come, tax map number to come off and what to go on?
Are you reprinting the MLR or can you modify the MLR that's printed? If you can add a note to the MLR that just says the noted, the.
I'd actually have to reprint the whole thing. It doesn't work out adding a note anymore.
My suggestion would be to remove the number and say lot number to be determined or to be added, to be assigned.
Assigned.
Assigned, yeah.
To be assigned.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Well, if I wasn't, what is going to mean?
I hope so, because we already voted.
Too late.
The intent is to, yeah.
To keep everything clear.
If he's got to reprint it, it would make sense to just remove the parcel number and say parcel number to be assigned.
I agree.
I appreciate all the history.
Yeah, me too.
Now, the paper copies I've submitted, when you sign those, just cross off the tax map number. Is that okay?
I'm okay with that.
So, yeah, we can.
I think that's okay.
Now, Joseph.
The MLR has to be the final version.
Joseph, in that $900 million fee I paid, that included the recording?
So the recording fees are not.
Still need those?
Yes, so recording fees are actually paid directly, so the town directly to the registry. Recording and L chip, so usually the applicant provides two checks, one for recording.
The applicant can't give you those checks, remember? You're not a quad-person check.
They have to be, right, it would have to be a business check or certified or.
I mean, I can give you the check, it's $51, yeah. I just don't want you to get caught on that.
Right, right. Yeah, no, they, I agree, they will not accept personal checks.
It's got to be a certified check.
Yeah, certified or business check.
I have a question, yeah, Alan, I have a question for you for the.
We're done and approved, though, right?
Yeah, so we're done and approved for your application, thank you very much.
Your response does not condition the outcome.
Neil does have a question for you if you will entertain him.
The Conservation Commission.
Is it, is it, is it okay if I address Neil's question?
I think it would be one.
On behalf of the Conservation Commission.
Yes, Neil.
We have a property on Cummings Hill Road, a section that goes from the bottom of the hill up to Texas Hill Road. That was, was that road laid out by the King surveyors prior to the lots being drawn up?
I don't know, we probably could find that one out. You know, Kevin.
Has he done more work in that area?
He has Kenniston's records, which has all the road layouts.
He has Kenniston's records?
Oh, yeah, yeah. John inherited, because I worked for John French, too. I'm 663 licensed, Kevin 664, so we're the same, more or less. You can tell when he makes a dry joke, you know, so, he just takes longer to tell them. He, you can tell him that, send him the film. He has the Kenniston's records, which he had a lot of that road research. So you can see if he has it, could look that up.
He inherited those records?
Yeah, yeah, he has those. He has Rick Dearborn's, Kenniston's, Ellen Maycomb's, he ended up with Ellen's. And I have Sam Hall's.
He's got some big maps, too.
Trying to get ahold of Tony Randalls, who did the Johnals as well.
Wow.
And also Danny Priest, which I just showed you that map tonight. So Tony had those, but, I mean, Tony was planning on using those for a while, but they're obviously not anymore. So, I don't know if the rest of you, you know, he passed away. Had office exercise, but passed away, that's what happens, so, teach him for exercise.
Well, the Conservation Commission is over a barrel. They have a problem with Japanese knotweed along Cummings Hill Road going up towards Texas Hill Road.
Yeah.
And the landowner, the Walter Newton family, donated land to the town for, they still own land in there. And so the Conservation Commission wants to clean up the Japanese knotweed, but it's on both sides of the line, and they don't know where the line is.
Yeah.
So I should call Kevin, huh?
So the landowner won't give you permission?
Well, they're, you know, I don't know exactly what the, it's a matter of liability, I guess.
Now, there is another client, Hampton just got ahold of a guy to do some knotweed work. Hampton, they work this for us, they're licensed. I don't know who it is, but supposedly he does that, a lot of knotweed stuff, so. I tell you, the, the, every time they're with the, the seminar house, they say roundups, you know, I think it really kills.
Kills everyone.
More area at all.
Because it gets to the root.
You know, yeah.
But.
It's like injected into the.
I have a good friend who's a licensed applicator in New Hampshire, and he said roundup will only work if you do it when it's in flower. Or it will work more effectively when it's in flower, and you can either put it on the leaves or you can cut it off and dump it down the stems.
Why does it only work when it's in flower?
The plant is more vulnerable when it's in flower. So it's the, and the end of the growing season, it's more fragile.
It still won't work upon application, usually.
Right, right.
Probably five years.
Back down to Bristol, Conservation Commission in Bristol, I was doing a survey next year, while he was out there this spring, I had a berry.
Yeah.
In every.
Into the stem, yeah.
He didn't have a big amount.
We had a small patch across the road from my house, and then every summer I was, like, I was pulling it every week when I would mow the lawn, and it just kept coming back and back and back. And like, three years ago, I had it with Roundup when it was in flower, and I didn't see it.
You know, the ledge climbing, the US Forest Service ledge climbing, it weighs up about 1,000 pounds.
Yeah, yeah.
I did the campground on the other side of the road there, and I couldn't even survey it until spring because it was 250 feet from the river, it was so thick with that stuff.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Couldn't even get through it.
I think our highway crews unknowingly did a great disservice by mowing it because it spreads by fragmentation, you know, and the first place you see it is that, is that markers on the highway where the mower blade would stop, they'd pick it up, and the fragments would fall off, and then they'd keep going, and it would grow by the, like, so, you know, if you mow it and don't clean it up, it spreads, any fragment can fall in root.
But if you go to Vermont, the whole.
The whole state. I'm amazed that Vermont has hog, or hog, no, what's it called? The Queen Anne's lace, not hogweed, but, anyway, the yellow Queen Anne's lace, like, yeah. It's a flower, it grows in all the ditches, but like, we don't have it here, they don't have it in New York. It's the weirdest thing.
Well, like, you know, the saying about Vermont is, for us, they were any one of the 13 colonies. And we, New Hampshire laid out half of it.
Yeah.
And, but the saying is for us New Hampshire people is that the best, you know, the best thing about Vermont is, is the view of New Hampshire. And the people in New York say the same thing, the best thing about New York is the view of Vermont. We use that as, we've had some joint meetings with people from the survey, so.
And we have rights to the entire Connecticut River.
We do, yeah, our border, yeah, the border between New Hampshire and Vermont.
Perfect, yeah, we'll, we'll, Vermont fine.
We'll get the MLR to you.
Sounds great. Big dog in them.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you.
You, sorry to drag it on, you know.
Thanks.
You're all good.
So, all right, don't worry, we'll set that down, Joseph, you know.
That's good.
I need your.
No, it's Hemlock.
Yeah, I was hoping to get the assessor's comment on it and then share.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was going to say.
Got to meeting time.
I don't know what color it is, but it looks like Queen Anne's lace, yeah.
Perfect.
Sue, why doesn't Sue Matt does not look like Queen Anne's lace, I don't believe, but Hemlock does.
Yeah.
We have a wide range of discussions today.
I would love to move on.
Let's move on to item number six on our agenda.
Well, Joseph has news for us.
Do we have any information or pre-application reviews, Joseph?
No info or pre-apps that have approached me anywhere.
Moving on to item number seven. Thank you, Alan, thank you, Max. Other business from members of the board and planning staff.
Yeah, do you want, I can quickly just go over this because I've been mentioning a few times to the board the tenure plan project that we had applied for the North Main Street Route 3 project. That was the realignment sidewalks, bicycle pedestrian, et cetera, in the area, in particular, north of Toby Road and all the way north to the bridge, realigning those intersections, flattening and straightening the road, for lack of a better term. So we did, unfortunately, hear some updates. We thought that was, that was going to be moving forward. Unfortunately, DOT has just released their draft of the new tenure plan, and only upon releasing the draft did they let towns know that they're suspending adding any new projects to the end of the plan. And not only that, they are actually removing projects which were already approved from prior years and funded in the plan. So the Smith Bridge Road project, which has been in the plan for probably six to eight years and was actually scheduled for engineering to begin in 2027, is off the draft plan. It's one of 49 projects that got removed. So DOT and the GACIT will schedule hearings. This is just a draft of the plan, and they'll hold a series of hearings around the state. They always do, they're required to. They have not released that information yet of when those hearings will be held. But I know we've talked a lot about Smith Bridge Road here, and I think it's worth noting that the tenure plan had $3 million allocated to do the improvements in 2032 with engineering beginning in 2027. And unfortunately, this draft plan removes that project as well. So we're kind of hit with a double whammy, not getting our new project added to the end and having our old project removed. And that definitely has implications for the decisions of this board in particular when we're thinking about those areas and also future master plan and transportation efforts.
Can I ask you a question? Did you say the towns have been informed since the, because?
If I said they've been informed, I misspoke. It's been made public. So there has been no direct communications to the town either that this was going to happen or that this had happened.
Like, nobody knows.
Nobody knows, no towns are aware of this, but.
You said they've been informed through the release of the plan.
Right, the information was made public last week in that it was put on a website that you can find if you think to look for it. And I think word is slowly spreading to the towns that were impacted, but we obviously have a project on there that's no longer, but also many other towns do, too. So I think there's going to be a lot of towns trying to get their project put back on, but 49 projects being removed is not likely.
Can you reiterate if you already said, why does this happening?
They, well, it's, they cite a lot of factors. Basically, this is the DOT draft. They cite state revenues changing, federal revenues changing, cost overruns, inflationary expectations, all these different factors that go into their calculation when determining the next 12-ish years of transportation projects. So there's no, there's no one factor, it's a whole multitude. And again, these are just the ones that were in up. The only reason I know that is because on this website, there's a presentation that DOT gave to the governor and council about this plan. That, there hasn't been a direct communication to towns as to why. And then the projects that towns had on the plan, capital projects, were listed. We have a list that says which ones were kept in, which ones were nominally left in but had construction funding removed, and which ones were fully removed from the plan. So that list has also been made public, and it does somewhat give a ranking of projects in terms of top priority, lowest priority, as DOT sees it. So you can kind of get a sense of which projects they felt were most important. They clearly didn't feel Smith Bridge Road was important, and I think a lot of people in Plymouth have expressed that they don't agree with that view, that they think it's quite important, but it was assigned pretty low scores on their list of which projects to keep and which to cut.
And the bridge is still being?
Bridge is still on the plan, that's correct. So that's purely a replacement or rehabilitation of the Green Bridge. So that project has not changed, but the.
Yeah, they just posted it, the bridge headed right after the.
Oh, okay.
Before coming in, yeah.
The one that barely never noticed.
Those new wave restrictions.
Yeah, can't go through there with a heavy truck.
Exactly, yeah. So that one's still in there, but the new project we had proposed in that area, the realignment, the sidewalks, the bridge itself, repairing is still in there. And I don't recall the year, but it is one that did make the cuts to here.
So this plan was developed by DOT, not by governor and council?
So the process of the tenure plan, towns and regional planning commissions submit their requests, and that's already happened. Plymouth's project was ranked very highly and recommended for inclusion by Lakes Region Planning Commission. DOT takes all of that information and drew up this draft to present to governor and council. Governor and council are now going to hold hearings and decide, do we keep it as is? Do we amend it, or, you know, what? The governor and council, really the GACIT, which is essentially the same organization as the governor and council, and then they will, if they make changes or not, they'll hold hearings, and then they'll submit it to the legislature for approval. So it's not done.
Yeah.
It's, it just is now moving on to the decision-making process.
Political football now.
And if you heard anything from the LRPC?
I have been in contact with the transportation planner, Glenn, and Shanna, the executive director, and they essentially don't have any additional information, though they will be meeting with some folks over the coming days to try and get a better sense of where we go from here. But essentially, they are finding it out the similar way we are.
Does LRPC have any projects left on?
There are some projects left on. I think there was a couple in, one in Center Harbor, one in Moltenboro. I couldn't name them exactly. There were other LRPC projects that were cut. Meredith and Bristol in particular had projects cut, as well as Plymouth. But there were a couple LRPC projects that stayed in as well. Laconia, Moltenboro, I don't remember, I'd have to look back at the list, but it's a mix.
Of course, it goes without saying, it doesn't create money, but as our infrastructure continues to fail, putting it off is not going to make it cheaper.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's an update without anything I can really recommend to the board at this point, other than there will be hearings on this in the coming months. Usually, they hold a hearing somewhere in Plymouth, maybe at the library, I suspect at the library. Because when the governor and council are holding hearings on this, they do them all around the state, at least historically they've done that. So I suspect they will roll out a list of dates, times, hearings over the next however long, and so certainly that will be the next step in the process.
Please keep us notified on the meetings, or the hearings, if you get that information.
I find it interesting that they cite. I find it interesting that they cite inflation as a reason to pull back on things, but in terms of high inflation, the sooner you do something, the cheaper it is.
Yeah.
It will always be more expensive the longer you wait.
Don't look that crazy.
Within the last two weeks, I attended two conferences. Within the last two weeks, I attended two conferences with the EPA, US Fish and Wildlife, and Army Corps of Engineers. And I asked the representatives from the EPA if they could tell me where the delineation point was for waters of the United States, which is very important. And, uh, they couldn't answer the question, in fact, they couldn't answer a lot of questions. They, they don't even know. One thing I did find out is that if you're doing a project, like, a friend of mine is works for the dam bureau and he's trying to develop a project to decommission a dam in southern New Hampshire and he needs, uh, he, he, he needs, uh, advi- he needs some guidance from the Army Corps of Engineers. And they said, well, our numbers are decimated, uh, and we, we just are overwhelmed by the work we have and we've lost a lot of people and if you, uh, in, make an inquiry, we can probably respond in two to three months. So, that kills your project.
Yeah, I'm overwhelmed, yeah, I'm overwhelmed too.
So, I just thought you might want to know that.
Yeah, it's good information, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Joseph, do you have any other business?
No, unless the board wanted to, I have the, um, there's that draft of the potential zoning amendment um, that includes some, uh, possible ways to comply with the changes to state law. So, that is, um, it's in the packet and certainly, if the board has any feedback on that, recommendations of things that you might have thoughts on, um, it's, there's plenty of time to continue to tweak this. Um, obviously, some things we just, we have to do, um, but if the board does have thoughts or wanted to, to offer any suggestions, um, I'm, I'm certainly happy to incorporate that, there's, I, I think, if we start, you know, start the conversation now, there's plenty of time to continue, uh, to make any revisions that the board wants to see or anything that we wanna follow up on in the future. Doesn't have to be.
So, can I, can I mention a communication received? We did receive some boxes and large pieces of paper.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That have started to appear and that we can probably check out and might be a good reminder.
Yeah, I, absolutely, so the six-word stories are here, the boards, I should say, are here and they were rolled out on Monday, you can find them in the library, town hall, the recycling center and at the senior center. We also have the fifth, uh, roving station, which is here, uh, if any planning board members wanna check it out, take it to wherever you might see fit, uh, talk to people.
And if anyone's watching online, go to one of these stations and fill this out.
Yes, it's a great opportunity.
Share your story.
Absolutely, it's, it's a, the boards are self-explanatory, they have a stack of cards and pens and a prompt to, to get people, uh, thinking about what home means to them. So, certainly, yeah, they're, they are out and about around town, please, you know, feel free to, to go engage with them.
Can I ask one more question? And this is like for the board, like, of the whole.
Please.
Um, I brought up in the past, um, PSU's intentions, as stated on multiple occasions, to transform one of its dorms, at least one, into a residence for staff and potentially non-staff. And I'm curious if we can ask Joseph or ask this board or someone to talk to them and find out what their intentions are, that Don Berks has mentioned this several times. And, and find out, maybe even from our own kind of legal counsel, what that means in terms of if they, my understanding would be if they allowed staff, this would be fine, because it's a government use of land. If they allowed broader workforce housing, that might not be a government use of land and that might be subject to zoning. And I would love to get clear intentions from the university and I would love to get a clearer kind of legal sense of, I'm not sure if any of this is even tested at this point, um, where any of this would fall in terms of whether they're allowed to do that.
That's a great question.
And whether or not we should have a conversation with them and try to address this in some way.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
Has the select board got any information from them or?
They haven't proposed any changes to, so.
I would think, just with all due respect from that on the college standpoint, they would need for the town to know what's going on.
They've been very vocal about it, but they haven't actually contacted us.
Yeah, but I think that's disrespectful, a lot to come to the boards, even, especially the select board, I mean, I just.
Our state legislators should know about what their plans are.
Is that university state, is the state helping university pay, since it's a university?
They get funding from the state, but they've recently had a huge amount reduced.
They weren't gonna get any more, which is gonna make it a lot harder for that.
The, the, the university is still getting money from the state, we were last in the country.
I know, but in a couple of years.
And we've just gone down. So, now we're like below last, uh, but we still get some.
But I, I just, I just heard rumors on the street, where someone said that they, they were saying in a couple of years, they were gonna cut them right out of the chances, I didn't know if it was true or not or how that worked.
It's not that severe.
Well, you reduced the budget, that's for sure.
Is that it?
They reduced the budget.
Individually.
I think that's, uh, definitely something to look into, I, um, I don't think that they should be, just put it out there for housing, uh, you know, that's just not.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure they're allowed to, if it's non-staff.
I just don't think it's appropriate at all.
State representatives, we should talk to them and ask them to inquire, because they have a right to know.
I agree.
I mean, there's, there's a way in which it makes sense, because this, the student population is shrinking and they have all this extra housing space. Um, and it could provide housing for people and revenue for the university, I get that. But in terms of like what our role in zoning and, I don't see that as a government use of land if they're not renting to staff, if they're actually renting beyond that. And I don't know what the legal guidelines are in that, 'cause I'm not a lawyer, but that's just my gut reaction.
Right, and like it or not, there are regulations, they don't have to like them, none of us have to like them, but they're there and that's the way it is.
Perfect. The, um, oh man, I had a thought and then just completely flitted away. There are go, there are going to be big changes in the universities beginning in spring semester of this year in terms of what that, what their business and finances look like, I am not privy to that specifically. Um, and it would be interesting to try to have some clear communication between what's going on, the president, so, so that the town has a better understanding of what's happening, I think, at the university. There's something about the, so, the Economic Development Committee as well. That's, a little flag is raising in my head about talking to the university about what's going on.
Oh, I saw, I see, okay. So, the flag is not raising on their side, it's raising on our side?
On our side.
Okay, good, good enough, yeah.
Yeah, for those who, uh, have volunteered to serve on the Economic Development Committee, I believe that the select board approved the members and has, uh, reached out to membership. There was a question about who's gonna serve on the select board and which, who the public membership going to be, so.
We have a list now.
What?
And we have a list now, I believe, yeah, of everyone, yeah.
Any other comments by anyone, does anyone have any other business they'd like to discuss tonight?
Well, I just have one question, Joseph, the six-word story, I have some, should I give them to you?
That's fine and I can put them in the box, or you're welcome to put them in the box.
I'll just put them in the box.
Yep, the box is downstairs, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Can I ask about Joseph's requests for feedback on the draft he's given? Does anyone wanna talk about any of this tonight, or do we wanna s- save it for a work meeting?
Let's do it for a work meeting.
Stop. John, John said we got a couple hours, so.
I am open to either, whatever.
If you're, if you're prepared, I don't think it would, I think it would prime the pump first to start thinking about these.
The only one that I wanna talk about, 'cause there's lots to talk about, or not lots, but there's a few things to talk about. But Joseph pointed out to me that, um, on the page that is discussing residential use in the commercial zone, we have special exceptions in addition to the others, require, special exception criteria in addition to the standard special exception criteria for residential use at the street level, which was that if the unit is occupied by family, they get two parking spaces. If it's unrelated, there's one parking space per bedroom, we just deleted all that, which I think is good. But then there are these two other, uh, criteria, which is the facade, including windows, shall be residential in character and the window signs are not permitted in the windows of residential units. And Joseph rightly asked, do we need those special exception criteria at all for residential use on the ground, on the street level, excuse me? So, but if no one's in the mood to talk about it, that's fine with me.
That's a good question.
No, I mean, it raises issues about like home occupations and whether or not you can advertise as a home occupation and whether that's something that we just allow or goes through a special exception or conditional use permit or?
Or what are the special exception criteria for residential use on the street level in the, in the village, period?
That's in the village, that's not in, so that's, that's not like the, um, I wa- I was thinking where we have to change the laws in the.
No, not highway commercial.
Highway commercial.
This is actually a separate, this is related to the need to remove any language which differentiates between related and unrelated families. So, taking out certain num- two of the additional special exception criteria that apply to, uh, ground floor residential in the village commercial zone, um, and as Molly said, that leaves two, uh, correct, if we took out those two criteria that deal with related versus unrelated family, that leaves you with two criteria, which, um, I think maybe worth thinking about whether those are the, the best criteria. And if we want additional special exception criteria for, uh, ground floor residential, because it is a special exception, so the standard criteria automatically apply, we do have right now four additional. Under this change, we would go down to two additional criteria. Are those really getting at what the board, or what the intent of the ordinance limiting street level residential and village commercial is? I, I think that's a worth discussion.
That's a good question, that's a good question, yeah. Okay, so, speaking of unenforceable, um, things that, in one case, were taken, have now been taken off the, um, docket here um, by state law, um, may I ask one more question, Matt?
Please, yeah.
Oh, select board member, um, as a resident of this town, I have concerns with, um, mandating that ADU holders affirm their primary residency, um, in that those parcels every year. It, it seems a bit over burdensome and kind of nannying people to.
To have like an annual permit?
To have an annual permit for an ADU, when we don't require anything like that, it's like so, so much else. And it's not like a short-term rental or anything, it's, it's residency, we have the, the rules, um, I, I get why we'd want to make them more enforceable, but that kind of annual affirmation seems, I mean, to me, it seems a bit much. But, I'm, I'm just putting that out, I'm just putting that out there and, um, yeah. I know it came before the planning board, we didn't seem particularly interested in it, and then I think with the select board before you were on, voted, um, for that change. Yeah.
I, I think we ask a lot of code enforcement already and I think giving them some tools to make their, make, make their job easier. Having an ADU, you know, we, we've addressed that it has to be owner occupied, but enforcing that is very difficult without some form of documentation, you know, it's not, it's, it's really no more onerous than registering a dog once a year.
Yeah, I, 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 just, that's my personal opinion, I'm just putting it out there.
But, but like, you know, if you have a dog, you have to pay a nine-dollar fee or whatever it is, and you have to go see the town clerk once a year. Um, you know, registering an A, you know, document, documenting that you're an owner who occupies a residence with an ADU.
I think it's.
It's not a huge lift.
I think it's ridiculous, myself, I do.
I mean, I'm, I'm of the personal opinion, if we have that rule and it becomes a problem on a particular property and we have a tool for enforcement, and if not, I, I wouldn't personally require it, but, um.
I don't think, I mean, it's, so, it's a, yes, they signed, is it an affidavit now that they signed?
I believe so.
Um, so you have an affidavit that says that, but I just don't, um, I don't know, I don't like it. I don't, I, I put, and I don't have any ADUs, I have no, nothing in this, I just don't, I don't think it's, um, I think it's an overreach by government, frankly, to be requesting these documents. You want a document when they cross the street to get the mail out of the mailbox, I mean, it's, it's too much, but that's just my opinion.
And I'm not, not one to normally complain about government overreach, but like, in this case, I'm not really, like, I don't see the purpose.
Yeah.
We used to have a form that every property owner in town had to sign and turn in every year.
Really?
Stating what we did with our property.
What do you, like, what?
Get away with it.
What you did with your property?
Well, yeah, did you make any changes?
Jesus.
Any changes at all?
Holy smokes.
Yeah, we, we had a regular form.
Have a bird feeder.
Or something?
Well, like before building permits, right, when you would sort of, when we didn't have a building permit come through for those, you would tell the town, like, if you did an addition for assessing records, is that, is that right?
Mainly.
Basically, they'd keep assessing records.
Yeah, but it pretty much covered everything you did.
When you purchase a property, in most towns, I don't know if it's a state RSA, but most towns with Plymouth, Romney, Hampton, all these other towns, an assessor sends you a document that is requested that you fill out, you know. Have you done anything, do you plan on doing anything in the next six, six months?
This was mandatory.
Wow, and I, well, I guess what would happen if you didn't, if you didn't do it, what would happen? They'd put a lien on your place you couldn't afford?
Take your property. No, I'm kidding.
Seems like building permits is a better way to do it.
I can't remember what the penalty was.
Sure.
I think, I think your taxes could be jacked up.
Of course, what is, what else?
I don't think it's a great idea myself.
Me neither.
Um, I think that if you, you do live there and then suddenly you have to move out of the area for whatever reason, for a short period of time, you no longer live there, why shouldn't you still have the ability to?
Are you proposing a zoning amendment to remove owner occupancy?
I, I just, I just don't think that it's, I, I'm not a big fan of it either.
Unless I, you're not gonna answer my question, that's okay.
But, but we, I mean, we allow multiple residences on a parcel, but.
Right, and that's right.
An ADU is allowed by right.
Right, right, if you want two single-family dwellings in one parcel, you have a little, little bit of.
There's, yeah, you have to do some more.
Application, yeah, but still available, yeah.
Cause the ADU can be attached or detached, right? Could be either way.
And we don't require owner occupancy for multiple residential units on a single property?
No, but don't those require, don't, don't we require, is it a site plan or is it a?
Conditional use.
Conditional use, right, but we, but we don't require.
Which is a one-time deal.
But we don't require owner occupancy, nor, like, it's a one-time deal, nor, nor yearly, um, affirmation and affidavit.
Yeah, that's true, that's a good point.
Um, it seems particu- like, we wanna encourage ADUs and then we're like, yeah, and we're gonna like nanny you every year and like.
No, I, I.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if there's any issues, you know, compliance can catch up with it, you know.
That's, that's what I was saying, yeah. Anyway, this word to the select board.
Well, I'll try.
Your hair's turning white.
What's that? My, my hair's turned white? Were you ready for motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I don't know.
Any other business anyone would like to discuss? Joseph, thank you for providing the amendments, we'll continue to review them and
Great.
help it along, so when it comes time to produce the drafts, that we don't, uh, but bargain with the budget changes at that point.
All good.
Great, thank you. Uh, are there any comments from the public? I am so sorry for clapping into this microphone like four times tonight, whoever is running AV tonight. My apologies, any public?
There's nobody on there.
No public comments, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
I'll surrender.
All in favor of a German?
Aye.